Naturally, would be the person who would bring that up. So ultimately, it's under the Board of Selectmen is because the DPW is under our jurisdiction, but of course, it's town property.
To Dennis's point, there were people who asked to use the on a temporary basis to, even our own contractors, when they're doing work for us. When they're coming in and parking on our site and confining it to our site, that's one thing, but to use our site to gain access to another site is, I think, was where that line starts to blur a little bit. And I think I'd be extending my authority beyond what's given to me normally to make those decisions. I don't mind it. I don't mind saying that what they're proposing is not invasive, what they're proposing is not going to interrupt my operations. I don't mind saying all those things as, by way of recommendation, that I have no problem with what it is they're proposing. And I understand, not only understand, but I laid out why does they have the need to do that testing.
And I guess the other question, Joe, is, and maybe it's not for you to answer, but if we were not to grant them permission, I mean, they're going to get access anyways. I mean, they're going to do the tests regardless.
That's correct. That's correct. It's not going to stop the project. They're just going to come in and they're going to go through the wetland area. They're going to come in, what is Meg Lane? They're entitled to cut some trees down. The interesting thing about the Wetlands Protection Act is, in order to support an application, there are activities that you can do for temporary disturbances, and they're trying to avoid those. So, yeah, they could go in and do that. And my suspicion is Concom will be very happy with them, but I think they're entitled to that. That's a fight between the applicant and the Concom at the time.
Yep, I get that, but I'm a real estate, I've been a real estate developer for 25 years, and this is a cost that we always build into our budget. You know, if I have, and I've had plenty of the Butters go against me over the years, and I've asked them for easements and access points, and the answer is always no, because if the answer was yes, well, it showed that they were in favor of my project. I'm not in favor of this project, I never will be. This is a town-owned property. We've written letters opposing this project. I think if we grant this easement tonight or this access point tonight, it's telling everybody that we're supporting this project. I can't be part of it. So, right off the bat, I'll be telling you, I'm voting no on this. I don't think we should. It's almost aiding and abetting them. I can't have that. It's part of their budget to come in over the wetlands, get proper approvals from Conservation Commission, and suck it up, basically.
Well, first of all, I think we need to clarify that it's not an easement. I mean, to grant an easement-
Well, it's an access point.
But that's important, because that was raised at Citizens and Speak, reference to the article at the, was it the October Town Meeting or the May Town Meeting at this point? I'm confusing it. But at a recent town meeting, we had that article, and that was about, that was for an easement, but that's-
It was October Town Meeting.
October Town Meeting. That's different than what's being asked here. This is not a permanent right-of-way that we'd be giving. This is a temporary access through the DPW yard just to allow some testing in response to comments that we filed in the 40B, raising a number of issues that are of concern to us. And I think we all agree, because we all took part in writing that letter and preparing it, and we've been at the 40B hearings, and we all have concerns about the project. I think that's different than allowing this access through the DPW yard to do soil testing. I'd rather not have the wetlands disrupted and damaged. And I think the homes on Randolph Ave are pretty close to those wetlands. I don't have, that map doesn't quite cover it, but the homes on Randolph Ave are very close to the wetlands. So if we do some damage to wetlands, does that impact private property? I don't know, because I-
I don't think so.
Yeah, I may have misspoken. I didn't intend to, but it may be misunderstood. They can do what's called a temporary alteration, temporarily damaged wetlands. They'll be obligated to restore them once they complete their testing. You just can't leave it that way. But they are allowed to gain access to their high ground by going traversing through a wetland, but they call it a temporary alteration and then restore it after they're done. So, any impact will be very short-lived, and the state law does allow for that. It allows the protection of those neighbors by having it restored at the end.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
So, I do have a couple of questions. I guess, the first one is, if we don't give them access and they go across the wetlands, and again, you may not be the person to answer this, Joe, but I mean, is it significantly increasing their costs or slowing them down at all by making them go through the wetlands?
Yes.
Significantly?
Significant. Talking to a guy who just spent $600,000 plowing snow.
Well, that's significant.
Not that significant.
Well, they'd have to get approvals from-
But there's a cost. There's an effort. There's an effort to do it. There's an effort to prepare yourself to get across it, and then there's an effort to restore it. There's burden, and there's some expense with that.
Right.
I wouldn't venture a guess, but certainly, they avoid all of that by coming through the other direction.
Right, right. So, they save time and some expense.
That's right.
Okay. I guess the second question is, and I'd stop asking you these questions, because I'm not sure you know either, but I guess I'd just throw it out. If we had to approve this, is there any way we can approve it and put in the approval letter that this is not, you know, we're not condoning the project, we still have significant concerns about the project, and that this is in no way indicating that we're in favor of giving you any permanent access or easement across DPW land? Just to make it clear where we stand?
Well, I guess there'd be no reason we couldn't do that. I think to grant this access through the DPW yard does not indicate any contrary position on the proposal. Our comments on the proposal are in our comment letter-
Right.
-to the financing agency.
I'd feel more comfortable, I think, if we made that clear.
I would disagree.
But I think-
Yeah, I mean, I don't have any objection to putting something in a letter stating that it's not a statement of our position on the application that's pending before the Board of Appeals.
That's correct. But if I was, if I were the developer here and you granted me this access point, I would take it that you're supporting my project. I'd love it. Plus, it's saving me a fortune, and it's saving me a lot of time.
I don't see how it could be reviewed by developers supporting the project when we have a letter on file-
We could say no.
... with raising a lot of issues, and we've already raised a number of issues in the independent case before the Board of Appeals.
Understood, Katie, but, like I said, this is built into their budget. Why not let them spend on it? Let them do their due diligence, get their approvals, put back the wetlands the way they got it, and go that route.
If the majority of the Board wishes to do that, we can do that. I think there's such a thing as picking your battles, and I think it's important that we raise issues that we're concerned with about the project, but if there's a request to do soil testing that's in response to a comment we made about the 40B project, and there's no reason that the DPW can't allow access, they've indicated it's not going to be disruptive of their operations, it's not going to cause them any damage, it's not going to cause any harm to the DPW to allow access, then-
What was the comment? What was the request?
I'm sorry?
Remind me what the request was, Joe.
To drive through the DPW yard to get into the property-
No, no, no.
In order to do soil testing.
But they have to do soil testing anyway.
What was the request by me during my comment letter to the zoning board? My comment to the zoning board and to Boston when they first applied, pointing out some of the pitfalls, is that their stormwater analysis lacked soil-specific information that needed to be in place in order to support their stormwater analysis. So they need to go in and gather that soil. So it was by my comment saying that you need to do that, is it that they need to get in with equipment in order to do that?
To test the soil.
Right.
They have to do it anyway.
They do. They have to.
Whether you requested it or not?
Right. We point, definitely we requested something special. We pointed out as a deficiency in their application.
Understood. My point is, whether you requested it or not, they'd still have to do it. If you build a single-family house with a septic system, you've got to do a soil test.
That's correct.
So, I don't think they're doing us any favors here. We're doing them a huge favor.
Part of the confusion, Dennis, is that soil test would be beyond, perhaps, if we didn't point it out, perhaps beyond the special permit process, whether it-
I don't think so.
Question of where it would fall.
I have faith in our public boards and-
That they would pick up on it.
Somebody along the line and their supporting staff should have raised the question, and it was us as supporting staff who raised the question.
Question, right.
So this would be the normal course of things.
Yes.
I do want to report to the Board that, I don't recall what it was, probably sometime last week, the town planner who's here in the room, the town administrator and I were in a meeting on another matter, but we did speak with Kathleen O'Donnell by phone, who's our 40B council, and did go over this issue with her, and her view was that there's nothing, by granting access, this is not a comment on the 40B application, and there's no reason not to allow this. It's up to us. If we choose not to, that's fine, but there's no reason related to the 40B project not to allow this, because allowing the access for a very temporary period of time for the purpose of soil testing is not a statement of our intent or our opinion on the 40B application.
I understand that, but, you know, this is council that we hire, that the taxpayers of this town are paying, and she's telling us that it's okay to grant this access, that nobody's going to take it like we're supporting the project. I disagree with that.
We're all interested-
She's supposed to be representing the town?
We're all representing the town. We're the executive board representing the town in this matter, and obviously, it's before the Board of Appeals, and they're the authority that's presiding over this, but we've raised a number of issues on behalf of the town. We represent the taxpayers, and just using the word taxpayers, I think we're all here advancing the cause of the taxpayers, and my point is that the tax, and we'll all vote however we feel on this, but I think we pick our battles, and I think the issues that we've raised about the 40B project really have nothing to do with this access. This is a request for a couple of days to drive through the DPW yard, remove a fence, drive through the yard to go into the property, do soil testing. It's not a permanent easement, and it's not a reflection on what our views are on the application.
That's your opinion, Katie? I mean, that's not my opinion.
I understand that.
Yeah. So, I mean, I just want to be clear on that.
I think we're clear on that.
I'm sorry?
I think you did make a good point in terms of picking battles, because, again, in the end, we're, you know, we've said everything that we can, we brought up all the issues to ZBAA in terms of where our concerns are, and we're hoping that they heed those concerns and, in the end, make some modifications. You know, if a special, if a comprehensive permit is to be issued or approved, then it'd be with some modifications. And most likely, that will be appealed if it is, and I think that's our big battle, is that appeal process, and everything leading up to that, trying to get some mitigation or some changes to that project to make it more amenable to the Butters and to the town. And I think that's where our battle should be, so I guess-
You're saying our battle should be at the Board of Appeals, or at the Mass Board of Appeals?
Well, I think ultimately, you know, we're hopeful that the ZBAA will heed our concerns, and if they are to issue a comprehensive permit, we'll issue it with some conditions that will, you know, either lessen the impact of that project, hopefully by either making it less dense or a better project. And if that is to happen, then in all likelihood, an appeal process will take place. We don't know that for a fact, but probably will. And that's the point, I think, that we have to-
I get that, Tom, but you know what? We can mitigate this by not granting an easement and still requesting what we want at the zoning Board of Appeals, and make it a desirable project for everybody.
Right.
You know, we don't have to give them something to get something. We can take and take and still give them a nice project.
Well, the project-
What does anybody gain, I guess, is the question?
That's going to be, litigated is not the right word, but that's going to be decided in another proceeding, not before us, but where our department heads are in raising a lot of comments, but that's going to be the Board of Appeals. This is a very limited request, and I think we have different views on the Board. I think we should move to a motion and take a vote, unless there's further comments that we want to make.
None of that, I think we've pretty much said it all. I mean, I'm just not sure what we have to gain by not granting it. I mean, they're going to do it anyways.
Well, so, let's make them do it.
And what does anybody, I mean, we make them spend a little bit more money.
We make them spend money.
Yeah.
Yes. They get the proper approvals from Conservation Commission. They'll put back the wetlands the way they got it.
Right.
And that's the normal procedure for any approvals that I've gotten over the past 25 years.
Right.
That's normal procedure, and it's built into my budget, it's built into their budget. Make them spend it. We don't have, you see, Tom, we don't have to live next to this. We have a lot of people that-
And can we perhaps make them spend it in a way that helps the town more, as opposed to spending it on something that is going to happen anyways? You know, I mean, for every dollar you force them to spend, there's another dollar of mitigation you don't get.
Maybe not.
Maybe, maybe not. I mean, who's to know? But, you know, if you're a vendor, which way would you go? You know, if you make me spend $100,000 now, then that's $100,000 you're not going to get later, because I've already spent it.
So, to move the discussion along, I'm going to entertain a motion to approve access to the proposed H&amp;W apartment project site, 693-711 Randolph Ave, through the Department of Public Works Yard to enable the project engineer and the design engineer to conduct soil sample tests to validate their stormwater management analysis and design. Would you be willing to make that motion, then, Tom?
Can I make a friendly amendment to that?
All right. Then I'm going to offer that motion. Do you want to make a friendly amendment?
Do I have to second it first, or?
No. What's your friendly amendment?
The friendly amendment would be what I said before, that we add to that, to make it perfectly clear that we don't, you know, this is not an endorsement of the project. We still have significant reservations about the project, nor is it a-
Well, I think we can include language to that effect in the letter. I don't know that it really needs to be in the motion, but-
Well, if that's a motion, I'd like to make another friendly amendment, to say that it is an endorsement of the project, in my opinion.
But that's not a friendly amendment to the motion. The motion is to approve access.
No, I understand that.
I just want to-
But Tom is adding a friendly amendment to say that it's not an endorsement.
And I'm trying to get the language of his friendly amendment. So, let me read the motion again that's been prepared. "To approve access to the proposed H&amp;W apartment project site, 693-711 Randolph Avenue, through the Department of Public Works Yard, to enable the project engineer and the design engineer to conduct soil sample tests to validate their stormwater management analysis and design." So I'm offering that as a motion.
And mine would be just to add language to the approval that it is not an endorsement of the project, nor a indication that we intend to grant any type of easement across DPW.
Can we say, "Said approval letter shall not be an endorsement, shall indicate that it is not an endorsement of the project." I just want to make sure Paula gets all of this down, in case I don't. "Said approval letter shall not indicate that it is an endorsement of the project," and?
And, "Or intend to grant any type of permanent easement or right-of-way across town-owned land."
Paula, do you have it?
I do.
Okay. So, I'll accept that as a friendly amendment. Are you going to second the motion?
I'll second that, yeah.
So, we have a pending motion. Any further amendments or discussion?
Good.
So, you're not offering a friendly amendment, then, Dennis?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I just, I have one comment. You know, in my 25 years, I've never come across a Board like this that would so easily approve an access point through taxpayer land. I wouldn't, I'd love to find a Board like this, but I haven't found one in the last 25 years, so, good for H&amp;W Apartments.
I just disagree with that, and I think that this is not against the town's interests, and I think that this is a very temporary access that's being requested, and there's no reason not to grant the access. So, I'll disagree with that respectfully. Any other discussion on the motion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you.
Chairman, are you finished with me?
We are, and we're an hour late letting you get down to work.
I have a big committee downstairs waiting.
Thank you very much, Joe.
Very good.
Appreciate it. Thank you for staying.
You're welcome.
And again, please convey the Board's thanks to all of the DPW workers for all of the work that they're doing. Thank you. We are back to, Chief Jack Grant has been here. I think we can cover the reserve fund transfer request fairly quickly. So, Jack, thank you for waiting.
Not a problem.
If you have anything to add about the snow emergency, the cleanup, the efforts of your department, please feel free to do so, because I think it's related to this RFT request.
Honestly, the only thing I can add to it is that, you know, these, my guys are out basically all day, every day. You know, they're doing their very best.
They're all working very hard, and we appreciate it.
Sure they are.
Yeah, yeah.
How is it going with the ladder truck? I know that you were-
We still run in the ladder truck, actually, we're running everything as we discussed the other day, that if there's a suspicion, you know, that we have an incident, we'll run it, but other than that, we'll leave it in quarters. So we'll be continuing, I expect we'll be continuing that for a number of weeks still.
So, we have a request for reserve fund transfer for $100,000 to cover overtime. If you could just speak to that a little bit, and I know you and the town administrator had a conversation about this, and we are, based on the numbers we heard earlier today, we're very concerned about the budget. We've had some conversations today with the Warrant Committee Chairman. So, we may want to consider whether the full hundred should be requested at this time.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and, you know, I certainly understand that, and I know Joe Lynch is not high on a lot of people's list right now, and I might have to mark him down on my notch as well if I can't get through this year.
Not Joe's fault.
No, it's certainly not Joe's fault. It's really, anytime we have to ask for a reserve fund transfer for our department on overtime, which has been a couple of times at this point, it's always driven by sickness and injury. I met with the Warrant Committee last week for my budget, and we got into this discussion a little heavier. You know, that is kind of the impetus that pushes it, but, you know, it ties together with, you know, just the vacation time and, you know, personal days, and it's the con- they ask me the one reason, you know, that causes the overtime, and there isn't. There's a number of reasons that come together, but it always does go off those years that we're seeing, you know, high sickness and high injury, and unfortunately, this is one of those years. And it started, actually, it started in the spring. It started toward the tail end of the last fiscal year, but, you know, you went through that period of time that's quiet, you know, for people seeking time off for other reasons, so we were able to get away with it toward the end of last year. But it's carried through, and unfortunately, it carries through today. We did have conversation today, and, you know, took a look at some things. I have not had less than three people out for the whole year. Currently, I hope I have five. I did have one out that I, by the sounds of things, is only going to be just a kind of a one-day thing and coming back, but, you know, you never know. So, I possibly have six, but I currently have at least five, and, like I said, that question mark of a-
Are they out sick or injured?
There are currently, say, of the five, three of them are injured and two of them are on sick time. And the other, if it prolongs, would be an injury as well.
How long are they out?
It varies. A couple of them are, you know, six-to-eight week kind of things, and quite honestly, there's a couple that are indefinite.
From an injury?
From injury, yes.
On-the-job injuries?
Yes.
So, that I understand, and the public understands, when a firefighter goes out injured, they still get paid?
They still get paid, yes.
Out of your budget?
Out of my budget, yes.
And then you bring in other firefighters to cover?
If necessary.
Okay. So where's the overtime, if necessary?
The overtime comes into play, if, say, I've got a group of 13.
Yeah.
I've got one injury, so that drops me down to 12, and I've got nobody else out. I'm still above our minimum manning level.
Above a level.
In that case, there'd be no overtime that day. Like I say, it's a combination usually of a lot of things coming together. It's when we drop below that 11 that kicks in, and you have to hire overtime to maintain that 11.
And overtime is, so you pay the firefighter, that's out, and then you pay the person that's covering them time and a half?
Yes, yes.
So we're paying two and a half times for somebody that's out injured?
You are, yes.
I know it's the same with the police, and it's the same with everybody.
Right.
So, we have a request for $100,000, and given the state of the reserve fund and the expected snow and ice deficit that we're running, the question is whether we should seek a lower amount at this time and then-
Revisit it later.
Revisit it later and really try to hold it as tight as we possibly can because of the looming snow and ice budget.
Mm-hmm. Just to throw a comment out there, if you don't mind, to make your decision more difficult. The hundred doesn't have a lot of leeway in it, and I understand the vote you have to take. If we come in, say, at half, I'll take a look at it, and I'll relay that information to you. I suspect that we would have some closures through the rest of the year. I'd have to kind of see what that would bring and set that up.
Any closures?
If we say, if I don't have enough money to get myself, we generally know what the average is to get through the year. If I'm above that, I would have to anticipate closing engine companies down for, on a per-shift basis. And the reason for doing that now is, like I say, we can kind of gauge the average of what it's going to take us to get to the end of the year. If we don't act on that early, you know, say, come May, if I run completely out of that overtime money-
That's catastrophic.
You know, and, yeah, you know, five people come through the door, or five people don't come through that door that day, I may be going out the door with, you know, seven people rather than, you know, 10. So it's one of those things that I'd like to know the number as early as possible so we can, you know, gauge for that and make those, if we have to, make those cuts as infrequently as possible. Like Tom said, if we wait until the end, it's catastrophic.
Right. I apologize in advance for putting you on the spot here, but do you know what your overtime was last year?
I could not give you an exact figure, but-
Did you request money from the reserve fund?
No, we did not last year. The past five years, and here's a big part of where the problem comes in, the past five years have all been $400,000 plus. There was one year, I think-
In overtime?
In overtime, yes. There was one year, like I say, I think we came in in the high 390s, just under four, and I think the highest year might have been four and a quarter. And we're currently budgeted in the overtime for $300,000. So, that right there kind of tells you that everything has to go right for us to get through the year. There was a case, two years ago, we did come, I did come in for a reserve fund transfer of $30,000, and as it turned out, it coincided with basically everybody that was out at the time, coming back within a week or two of that. I made that request, you know, looking at it and with the unknown of, do they come, you know, do I get them back, and not expecting them to come back that quickly. When I spoke to the Warrant Committee at that point, I probably addressed it here as well that way, you know, I put it out there that, look, if, it will go to maintaining the minimum manning and absolutely nothing else, and if we don't spend that, we'll return it back at the end of the year. In that case, like I say, if the stars aligned, then I return the whole $30,000. You know, this year here, like I say, there is some unknown there.
So, Chief, in your budget, I'm not even sure how it works, Tom, maybe you'd know that, is there a line item for overtime?
There is.
There is?
Yeah, yeah, like I said, that line item sits at 300, and, you know, we've habitually been spending four, or four-plus.
There's a line item there, but in terms of the way that the-
There's a line item there, but in terms of the way that the, the appropriation is made, it's payroll and, and general. So there is the ability to, although somewhat limited, you can, you can move within your salary budget.
Right, and, and that's, yeah, and that's exactly what we do, you know. If we have, you know, a retirement or, or whatever, we'll steal, you know, and, you know, that, that allows us hopefully to make up that difference.
Right, yeah.
But like I say, it really requires everything to go right, and this is one of those years where, you know, it just isn't going right.
Are you confident that this is enough to get you through the end of the fiscal year?
A hundred? A hundred I would be confident would get me through, yes.
You think you can give some back?
At a hundred, I may give some back. You know, it probably would be, and again, would depend on, on people returning, but as we, as we're currently situated, say, if we went, if we got a hundred, I may be able to return, you know, five to 10. You know, I would say I, in, in any situation, I'm probably not returning much more than 15.
So Chief, I, I think a potential compromise here might be to request, the request is already written out for the full $100,000 as a transfer. What if we were to request a transfer of 50 and a set-aside of 50? And, you know, with the understanding that you, as the department, had a really going to try to, I guess, come back to us if you're, if you're using up 30 or 40 of it and see where we are during the year, you know, keep us updated on this, if the warrant committee is willing to do a $50,000 set-aside.
Absolutely.
And that way, you know, it's earmarked, but it's not transferred into your budget at, at this point, but the warrant committee, if they approve a set-aside, could hold it aside and understand that the request is coming, and let's see where we wind up with the snow and ice. That might be one option to look at for this.
That, that would certainly, if we know that that's a definite and it's out there, that certainly works for us because, you know, it, when I'm in these kind of situations, I'm, we're looking at the budget every week and reassessing. And like I say, two of these, I believe, two and possibly three of these are probably back in the next, you know, two weeks to a month, so that certainly, you know, helps. And again, I, I know, you know, having dealt with one of these unknowns, and, and again, I, you know, you can't get into specifics because you're dealing with people's medical history, but I had a similar case before, and it, you know, it's literally day-to-day. And in, in the other case, day-to-day meant four months. In this case, day-to-day might mean, you know, two weeks.
One suggestion though I'd make, if, if we're going to do that with the set-aside, which I don't have a problem with, but I, I would ask that you operate until we really know what the snow and ice is like. The 50 may be all you get.
Right, oh yeah. Well, there, there again, that's why I say we will, and we'll start that, we actually started that exercise this afternoon, but I don't have enough to really speak to it as we sit here. I'll, I'll start putting those figures together and let you know really how, you know, how we look and...
Yeah, and, and hopefully we'll, we'll have, you know, within the next 20 days or so, we'll have an idea of where we're...
I think that's a good point, Tom, yeah.
And we could ask you to keep in touch with the town administrator about looking at data on where this is at and how the, how your overtime is looking.
At this point, like I say, we will, we'll, you know, I've said this to Emory earlier today, and I said it to the warrant committee. It's one of those things this year where what was going on late spring and into the summer, I could have told you July 1st that I'd be here, but at, at that point in time, there's, there's just no way I can put any kind of number to it. So we really kind of look to doing that, you know, the first of the year, and, you know, unfortunately, all this snow has pushed us back that I haven't been able to get the number to you until now. So yeah, at this point, we will look at it week to week, and I will certainly keep in touch very closely with Emory on it.
Okay.
So 50 and 50?
Yes.
So we have a draft motion approving a request for 100. Do we want to offer a revised motion?
Yeah, I could probably read it. I'll make a motion to approve and forward to the warrant committee a reserve fund transfer request from the fire department in the amount of $50,000 to cover overtime and out-of-grade costs due to injuries and illness, and a $50,000 reserve fund set-aside to cover, to potentially cover cost of overtime and out-of-grade costs due to injuries and illness.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Greatly appreciated, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. We'll go back to trying to fit in, move some things around on our agenda. The next item was a discussion of the town administrator article. Why don't we take that a little bit later in the evening? The liquor license home rule petition warrant article has been deferred at the request of attorney Bob Sheffield, who's going to meet with us in March to discuss that. The next item is a memorandum of understanding with the Milton Animal League, and attorney Marion McEttrick is here representing the Animal League. Welcome, Marion.
Hi, Marion.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having me in. The purpose of my being here is basically, hopefully, to watch you sign my memorandum of understanding. But just to refresh everybody's memory, the last time I was here, we had a discussion of the final draft and pretty much seemed to be in agreement on everything. There were some missing items of information which had been supplied, but the Animal League asked to have some time to go back and confer with major donors to make sure there wasn't anything in this memorandum that would cause a problem. They have done that and have been told that there is no problem with the language of this agreement as far as the donors are concerned, and so I'm back here tonight to ask you if you would be willing to sign the agreement so that we can get to work on the next step, steps.
And I think it's dated, the draft that, or not the draft, but the copy that was signed by the Animal League that came back to us has a date filled in, February 8th. I think we'd want to change it to tonight because that, today, the date it's signed sets in motion, the clocks are different.
That's true.
So why don't we date it as of today, the 18th?
That makes sense, yes.
And then our next items are obviously site location, but putting a committee in place is probably our first order of business under this.
Yeah, the other question the league asked me to follow up on was exactly that. What are our next steps? And they also indicated, certainly because there's a timeframe for it, site selection is going to be an important issue to continue to look at and try to address. Formation of the building committee, we talked about at the last meeting. That seems to be a first step because a building committee is going to be a group of people that will help work with the board and with the Milton Animal League on, on all the other aspects of construction, gift, formation of how a gift could be given and managed by the town. And the league is working on who might be appropriate recommendation from their own membership. They have some ideas about that, but, and I've talked to them about the fact that we really need somebody in this committee who has energy, who's interested and knowledgeable about energy-efficient design. So just want to say that again tonight. If you're out there and you've worked on some other projects for the town, or if you haven't in this area, this is a project where we would really like some advice and expertise. The town would like it. I've talked to Bill Ritchie about this. The town has a certain amount of expertise itself, but we need people who know the latest and, and the best, and can give us advice as to what it might cost to include design features that will make this building as close to energy-neutral, is that the term? You know, I mean, that's the way you want to try to do things these days, but especially for this building, because this is a building that will be staffed largely by volunteers. Much of the operation's going to be paid for by fundraising as it is now, and it will cost more than, or if, if we don't adopt some pretty amazing energy efficiency features, it will cost more than our current shelter does to operate because that's just a small cement block building. So that's a really key issue for, I think, the town and for this project, and we really need some help with it. I'm not an expert. I know it's interesting, but I just don't know that much about it. So I'm really hopeful that somebody will let us know, and we'll also be calling, I will be calling anybody I know who has worked in, in the past with the town to see whether they can help or whether they have a suggestion for someone who can help. Otherwise, do you have to define a charge? Would that be your first step in forming?
I think it would, yes. And we have had one person volunteer to serve on the committee, and that person has talked to someone else, and so I think, and the Animal League is identifying some people. So I, we probably have a, two or three people who are willing to come forward in short order, but will want to get some more volunteers. So this is a good opportunity to solicit volunteers, but we should probably work with the league to prepare the charge.
And I looked at a building committee charge for the library and, you know, just tried to get some thoughts about what the language often says, but there might be some particular things that we want to say for this one. So I, I'm happy to, you know, sort of do a quick draft and send it to Mrs. Fagan, and then have you take a look, and maybe our next goal, our first goal should be to prepare that. Try to agree on a charge as quickly as possible and continue to try to see who's interested in being on this building committee. I, we haven't actually, I haven't met with all the members because we keep having snowstorms and we schedule meetings, but I expect to meet with them soon, so I can report back to them that that will be our first priority. There are a series of agreements anticipated by this memorandum of understanding, so if you'd like, I'll also send you some kind of communications saying, in my opinion, you know, and after conferring with Milton Animal League, this is probably the order in which we would want to draft these agreements. And then we'll be, we'll see if we agree on that, and if we do, then we could start working on whatever the first one or two of those might be. The framework's here. The drafting requires more work, but usually it falls into place piece by piece if you have this type of memorandum, so I'm hopeful that we'll be able to make a lot of progress now.
I, I do agree with you, Marion, that, that, you know, energy efficiency is, is key to this, you know, as well as any other efficiencies, just in terms of operating costs of the building, just the way it's configured and whatnot, but, you know, should be things we're looking at, you know, be it alternative energy or, or what. But, I mean, there are, certainly are credits out there for alternative energy that wouldn't be available to the town, that, you know, it's available to, you know, for profit, you know, whether there's opportunities to use, you know, private-public means of selling credits like that, you know, should be things that explore.
And the MOU contemplates this, and this is a framework, again, for future agreements related to this project, so this is the starting point.
Plus, we're in the stretch energy code in Milton, and I'm wondering if Bill Clark knows, does that apply to commercial buildings as well?
Yes.
Does? That's good.
I think, you know, the, the principle we, everyone needs to follow with this project is the, the more energy efficient, the better, because it's going, future costs are going to be, they're going to be an issue for everything that the town does, but with a new building and a building that's anticipated to be run this way, I don't think the project can work unless we incorporate those features.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
Okay. The MOU is on the form that we previously reviewed it, so do we have a motion to approve the MOU?
I'll move to approve and sign the memorandum of understanding between the town and Milton Animal League.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Marion.
So we'll sign it.
We'll see you soon.
Later this evening, and we'll get a copy over to you, Marion.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. We're on to number nine. Caroline Canceler is our Public Health Director, and she's here to talk to us about the mosquito control program in Norfolk County.
Not going to see many mosquitoes tonight.
Yeah.
You're right.
Good evening, Caroline.
Good evening.
Thank you for waiting.
Thank you.
So I attended the January 13th, 2015, meeting of the Norfolk County Mosquito Control District, and you asked me to report back on what they said. So they want a declaration of support or no support of mosquito control funding for FY 2016. So we're a part of 25 towns that are voluntarily a part of the district, and through efforts of integrated pest management, including surveillance, source reduction, larvicide, and adulticide, the Norfolk County Mosquito Control District comes to Milton and provides services to Milton, and I have a report about that that I'll tell you about. The FY 2016 estimated cherry sheet assessment for the town Milton is $78,371, which is a 2.5 increase from last year's budget. So what they did for Milton last year, summarize it a little bit. For surveillance, there was 789 requests for service, which is one of the top three out of the 25 towns, so we, we did request a lot of service for spring. Culverts cleared seven, drainage ditches checked by hand and cleans 8,130 feet, intensive hand and clean brushing 8,130 feet, tires collected three. Spring aerial larvicide applications, 187.5 acres. Summer aerial larvicide applications was zero acres, but larval control, those briquettes they put in by hand, 1.6 acres. Rain basin treatments, briquettes by hand, 1,270 acres in the basins, and adult aerosol ultra-low volume applications from the trucks was 10,596 acres. So they have done a lot of work in Milton. And I did want to say that they do come into the town Milton on Thursday evenings, and you can request to have spraying done. You can go to their website at the Norfolk County Mosquito District, and you can also call them on the telephone on Thursdays, 617-582-6216, to find out if your street is included in the application zone. You can also wish to be excluded, and if you do wish to be excluded from these area-wide applications, you must follow the state regulations which include sending a request for exclusion to the town clerk's office.
Caroline, how do they spray? What do they do?
They, they spray by helicopter, and they also do it in the trucks. They go around in the trucks. They put the briquettes in, in the catch basins, and they clear the culverts. So it's a very large-scale process that they do throughout the year. Starts April 13th and ends August 31st.
Is the reason we're number three partly because of the Blue Hills?
I just think people are aware to call, you know, and they go to the website and, they're concerned citizens and...
Those are individual resident requests.
Yes, individual requests, yes.
We have a draft motion to prepare, to support a preliminary budget.
Tom, I forgot my glasses, I'm sorry. Okay, I'll do it. Let's see, where is it? So I'll move to support the preliminary mosquito control budget proposed and Milton's estimate, estimated proportionate share thereof expressed as both a percentage and dollar amount, and to provide this municipality, and to provide to this municipality in compliance with the state reclamation and mosquito control board budget notification and compliance certification policy.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Caroline, thank you very much for waiting for two hours. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. We're on to the Ulan Rink fee increase discussion. Our planning director stepped outside. He'll come and join us. And Tom, you'll probably lead us on this discussion.
Yeah, I'm the one that asked that this be put on the, the agenda, and believe me, Curry had nothing to do with having this thing on the agenda, nor has Curry asked for a rate increase to be put into effect right now. But on, on January 6th...
Excuse me. Bill, would you like to come up and join us at the table? We're on the Ulan Rink discussion. Go ahead.
On, on January 6th, the state did approve and change the, I believe they're going to change the code of mass regulations to, to increase the skating rinks, the user fees by $25 per hour for the prime time hours, correct?
$25 an hour, yes.
Yes, but not the non-prime? That's staying the same apparently.
I didn't see that part of it.
I didn't either, but I'm told that.
They did put in, they did put in public skating too.
Right, charge up to $5 for public skating.
Tom, can I ask you just before you go on? They, they authorized the town to increase the fees.
Well, no, this is across the board, so they changed the, see, the, the agreement we have right now ties the rates that we can charge for hourly skating to what's published in the code of mass regulations, which hasn't been changed in probably 10 or 15 years. I don't know.
I know that we're charging the same thing that MDC charged in 2006.
Right, so it's been many, many years.
We first got our permit from, or our letter of award from DCR. We had gotten a letter from then Commissioner Sullivan saying that you could next year ask DCR for an increase in rates, which we did. We did, each year, we have asked DCR for the increase that he told us we could ask for after the first year. This is the first time that we have been granted that. All of last spring, all of last summer, and the fall, we were told that we would have the new rate starting September 1st. And then we were told that the bill was stuck in, and it's not a bill. in, and it's not a bill, that the rates were stuck in administration and finance. And then there were public hearings, and by the time the thing got dragged out, some of the other rinks had already been told to go ahead and charge the $25 increase, because that's what has already been approved. We didn't, we waited, and they came back and said, January 16th, the rate was effective, and you could charge from that date.
Right. We didn't find that out until the end of January.
Right.
And effectively, what it means, if we were to do a rate increase from this point forward, should we choose to do that and not do public skate? It would be about a $13,000 or $14,000...
$13,000 and change.
...of additional revenue for the remainder of the season.
For the operating costs.
Right, so it's, revenue-wise, it's just not a big number, and I do tend to agree that, you know, even though we have informed youth hockey many times that we do intend to increase the rates or request a rate increase.
Every time we would send a letter to DCR, the rink manager within notified the rink users that we were doing that, and they would do that in February.
Right.
So, we have a series of emails going back to Milton Youth Hockey, starting last February, that we were looking for an increase, and that they should plan for that increase. That was February. We did it again in March, on March 20th. We notified every user as a line item in the user meeting on July 7th. We had all of the users at the table, and that was one of the action items on the agenda that night.
Including youth hockey.
Milton Youth Hockey was there, yes. We have emails directly to the ice, ice time coordinator.
Now, that being said, the DCR has already made the decision not to increase their rates until next season.
They said they would do that on anybody that they were, anybody that they had under contract to this point. If somebody comes in and wants to use ice, they're going to charge them the upper rate.
Right, but to all the people...
Ours is already committed.
For the whole season anyways. So, it would be my suggestion that, right now, we haven't been formally notified that we've got a one-year extension on the permit, nor do we know at this point if we do, if we are offered a one-year, whether we're going to accept it or not. So, we can't say definitively what's going to happen next year, but my recommendation would be that we keep the rates, you know, honor the rates that we've put in in the beginning of the season, you know, the same as DCR is doing for, for the remainder of the season. And should we, to put everybody on notice right now, that, you know, should we get a one-year, get and accept a one-year, you know, extension of the operating agreement, that we will be looking to put an increase in the next season.
That sounds reasonable to me. So, I don't think there's anything we need to vote. This is really on the agenda, really, is a discussion.
Right. I'm just trying to comprehend it.
Any other discussion?
Just for, just for information purposes, we did call around to figure out what other rinks were charging, other DCR rinks, other rinks run by municipalities, and...
Oh, it was a lot.
Right now, we are the lowest. The others have charged the increased rate, and that's all of the other, we're in a group of five, but there were other rinks that got let out just before us, and all of them have already gone up to that increased rate.
Right.
So, are we expecting to put this on the agenda again, Katie, to vote on it?
I think we're taking our lead from Tom, who's really our point person on this issue.
Yeah, I don't think we have to, I mean, we can formally, certainly formally vote to leave the rates where they are. I think it's premature to vote to increase them next year, because we don't formally...
We don't have any...
We don't have it after April.
Right, but to at least put the users on notice, you know, through this discussion, that should we, that, you know, in all likelihood, we, you know, we will look to increase the rates to the statutory amount that we're...
If we get a one-year extension or beyond it.
Well...
It doesn't matter. If we have it, we will go up. If DCR has it, they will go up.
They will go up, yeah, so either way, the rates are going to go up.
Anyways.
Okay. Oh, I see what you mean, meaning if the town does not get the deal to run it again.
If DCR runs the route next year, those rates are going up.
DCR will take it over, and they'll increase the rates.
Right.
They've already increased the rates.
In other rinks.
For the rinks that they run.
Right.
They've already increased those rates, but only for new users.
State standard says this is what they're supposed to be charging.
If DCR takes it over again, is it more than $25 per hour?
No, they're going to get the 25.
No, but I'm saying, have they increased more than 25 bucks?
No. Other, other DCR rinks have.
Yeah.
Many of the other rinks are charging more.
Okay, that's the point I wanted to get to. So, if DCR takes it over, they are going up $25, but no more?
Yes.
Okay. We have the option of going up $25 or not?
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
So, Tom, are you asking that we take a vote, or do you want to leave it without a vote?
I think it wouldn't be a bad idea to throw a motion forward just for the remainder of this year. I don't think we would probably take a vote.
Do you want to make the motion?
So, I'll move to maintain the current hourly rates for both non-prime time and prime time hours that we put into effect and have been in effect since, once beginning of the season, September 1st?
September 2nd.
September 2nd of 2014.
2014.
And similarly to not, continue to honor not charging for public skate as we have in the past.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Okay, thank you for that report, Bill and Tom. We're on to the Swift Hat House Preservation Committee charge. We have a draft committee charge. In a nutshell, this committee would, you know, obviously, we can alter the terms in a discussion tonight if we'd like to. The proposal is for nine members, including two members of the Historical Commission, and we want to have some of the other members have experience in historic preservation, architecture, development, construction, real estate, planning. The committee would have, would consider potential uses for the building, fundraising and financing options, historic designation, preservation. Committee would work with the town planner and the owner of the building and have authority, this grew out of a comment that you made at a prior meeting, Tom, to, I put it as in conduct public meetings or hearings to solicit suggestions or informal proposals.
That sounds fine.
Okay.
I think.
So, this is a proposal for us, and then if we adopt the charge, we could come back at, whether it's Tuesday or at a following meeting, to appoint the committee members. We do have a couple of people who've expressed an interest. I forwarded this along to Steve O'Donnell, who's the Historical Commission Chairman, to take a look at, because it contemplates his committee appointing a couple of members.
Okay. The only, I think the only change I would make is of the seven residents of the town, if at least two of them could be from the Milton Village area.
Okay.
Might not be a bad idea.
Yeah, and I think some of the people we reached out to are from that area. Okay. Do you want to add that after estate, real estate or planning comma into whom shall...
Yeah, that's fine.
Reside in the Milton Village neighborhood?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion on this charge?
Good.
Then, do we have a motion to approve the committee charge?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, if anyone has any members that they want to suggest, why don't we funnel them through Ann Marie, let her know of anyone who has an interest or who any of us may have already contacted, and then we'll try, if we have enough members, we'll get this on for next Tuesday. If not, it might be more likely that it'll be on for early March. Get the committee appointed as soon as we can. The next item is a Curry College pilot payment.
Okay, I'm okay. I'll check in with Tom's here.
Number 12, Curry College pilot payment.
Okay, right there. So, I'll move to accept a supplemental voluntary pilot payment in the amount of $9,610.21 for the fiscal year that began January 1st, 2014, which represents, July 1st, 2014, which represents current real estate tax on the Curry Colleges acquired property at 1016 Brush Hill Road.
I'll second the motion, but my question is, is that per quarter, or is it for the whole year?
I think that's the whole year.
The letter, it's a supplemental payment, let's see.
They already paid the first two payments for the taxes for the year, which were $14,048.70.
Okay, so it's just the balance of the year.
So, it's the balance of the year.
Okay.
So, they're going to continue to pay what the taxes were on this property.
And again, I think it should be pointed out, you know, that Curry doesn't have to pay this.
That's correct.
You know, because of the Dover Amendment, but, so we appreciate the fact that they are stepping up and paying it in particular on this house going forward.
Right. I mean, you're right, this is voluntary. Curry did sign, sign an agreement with the town that they wouldn't do this, but it is, it certainly is voluntary.
Yes, but I think you're right, that we should thank them for their payment of this pilot payment. While we're on the topic of pilot, before we vote on the motion, is there any update, Dennis, from the pilot committee on when they'll be back before us?
Well, we, we've tried to meet, I think, three times in the last number of weeks, but...
Snowstorms.
Snowstorms, so I'll have an update at the next meeting.
Okay, great.
We have a draft of a, and a recommendation for the board, so...
Good. Do we have, so with the motions being made and seconded, do we have any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We also, we had a discussion on our agenda of the public safety personnel override. I think we should defer that discussion, given the hour and the fact that we still have some things on our agenda tonight that'll take some time. We have an Eagle Scout letter, two letters of recognition and a proposed motion.
Okay, I'll move to approve letters of recognition to Christian A. Jamal and Timothy Eberhard on the occasion of their, these young men achieving the rank of Eagle Scout on December 11th, 2014.
Second motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations to both of them.
Congratulations, yeah, it's a great honor.
It is a great honor. It's one of those fun events.
Yeah.
To go to always a select...
It truly is, yeah.
Okay, we skipped over number six, the discussion of the town administrator warrant article. So, I just want to pass out the latest drafts from the Government Study Committee that came over late this afternoon. We have copies for the, we give copies to the press who are here, Lauren and Frank. So, Rick Neely, the Chair of the Town Government Study Committee, sent these comments over based on his committee's discussion last week, and I spoke with him yesterday. We went, we walked through what the comments were. Some of them he's put in as margin notes, and they're really the questions that his committee raised, but I think the good news is that we have, we really have some pretty broad agreement here, and there are a few open issues that we need to work through tonight and over the next couple of weeks, but the Government Study Committee has agreed that the fire chief and the police chief should be appointed by the town administrator and not by the board. So, we have agreement now on that issue, and I...
That's good.
We've made really some significant progress on this. There's a wide area of agreement here. The areas that we need to talk about, this is a black line copy, so you can see what changes they've made. In paragraph 2B, they've decided to go back to the 15-day period for the veto period, and that's, the thinking there was that 30 days is really too long to have somebody wait to know whether they have a job. In the sixth line, that first word, employment, shall become effective, it's not in here, but they want to change employment to appointment, and I think that makes sense, because if you look on 2B, you get down to the sixth line, the first word in the line is employment, shall become effective on the 15th day.
Yep.
They want to change the word employment to appointment, because the language refers to appointment, and really, the person's employment would start whenever they start, but the appointment itself is what's being made.
That's right, yep.
Excuse me. In 2C, they've changed some language to take out the requirement that there be a discussion with the board for a suspension, and they're having the discussion with the board, and the word is changed from consult to inform. So, the town, if the town administrator wants to remove a department head, the town administrator would inform the chairperson of the Board of Selectmen, but if the town administrator wants to suspend an employee, a department head, then there'd be, the town administrator could do that on his or her own. It would not be something that would need to be, the board would need to be informed about in advance.
Any department head, yeah?
Any department head, that the boards, that the town administrators are appointing. There's obviously some like the library director, the town administrator won't appoint, so...
Right.
She or he wouldn't be suspending that person.
I like that.
It looks like D, that's probably just a cleanup change. In 2J, you can see what their comments are in the margin. They, I think they're probably right that Milton Housing Authority needs to be added to the list of boards that are accepted here, because the housing authority controls certain property that the town administrator wouldn't be responsible for renting.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah, that's fine.
They asked a question, I think the Council on Aging Facility, Rick and I discussed that question. We think that is already under the jurisdiction of the board anyway, so we don't think that needs to be added. The Conservation Commission will double-check on this one, but the question that the Government Study Committee raised was, does the Conservation Commission actually hold title to any property? And I know they have restrictions and easements and other rights, but I don't know whether they have any actual ownership.
And if they do, it wouldn't be anything if we rented anyways, yeah.
No, so, so that's really just some clarification. They also thought the last clause was a little bit confusing, so we need to figure out the wording. It's a little bit unusual here that the only position, under this draft, the only position that would be appointed by the Board of Selectmen would be the Consolidated Facilities Director, not the police chief, not the fire chief, just the Consolidated Facilities Director, because there's an agreement between the board and the school committee, for the board and the school committee to appoint that person. So, you know, one question I raised back to Rick, and we should probably talk about what our thoughts are on this tonight, should we try to...
Amend that.
Amen that agreement to have the Consolidated Facilities Director be appointed by the town administrator? We'd probably want to ask that the superintendent on the school side be the one making the appointment.
I thought of the same thing.
I think it would make sense for the town administrator and the school committee to be appointing that, but that's something we'll have to talk with the school committee about.
So, who's left to be appointed? I know the building commissioner?
No, the building commissioner would be appointed by the town administrator.
That's what I'm saying, so the Consolidated Facilities would be appointed by...